Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, October 15th, meeting of the Montgomery Township Board of Education. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to reconvene in an open session.
So, second.
Then properly move me second. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor state aye. Aye. All those opposed, same rate. Extinctions. Roll call, please, Mr. Trent.
Yes, Ms. Allen.
Present.
Ms. Belec. Ms. Franco-Herman.
Present.
Ms. Harris.
Here.
Ms. Noggin. Mr. Nunez.
Here.
Ms. Elekter-Jernan.
Here.
Ms. Vina.
Present.
Mr. Todd.
Here.
Thank you.
At this time, please, the rise of the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
At this time, we'll have the MTSD student representative report from our new student rep, Sophia Bush.
Hi, my name's Sophia Bush. I'm a junior at Montgomery High School. I'm just excited to be here. I'm just gonna talk a little bit about what we've been doing in school lately. So, starting at the end of August, we've had our kickoff to fall sports, and we've started with our dance team, cheer team, and all of them. Have a very large student involvement in our football games, especially with upcoming coming up this weekend. We also had our freshmen introduced to the school, and our club there, and our freshman orientation. And as a peer leader, I saw especially firsthand that there were a lot of student involvement and a lot of diversity in our clubs. We also started a PPSA starting meeting, as well as hosting freshman bootcamps for freshmen and veterans who probably come out from the high school. And our U of M and Madya Nations Club have put in, I guess, this is our voter registration, and having our senior students who are aged to vote in the upcoming election, registered to vote. And as I mentioned before, we also have started our school's spirit, homecoming and pep rallies, which also solid our events for graduating students.
Thank you for that report, and again, welcome. Any questions on this wish report? Every now and then, we now welcome to superintendent reports and presentations.
Good evening, everyone. There's a few presentations, but first I wanna talk about what's happening in the schools. At the high school, as Sophia just said, you know, the students are in the midst of the college application process, and the high school ELA teachers are working hard to support them by workshopping college essays and personal statements in and out of the classroom. Every year, we are increasingly amazed at our students' passion, accomplishments, and creativity, and we love helping them highlight the young adults they are developing into. Teachers in the science department are collaborating with teachers of the arts and career collectives to create cross-curricular experiences in food sciences, architecture, engineering, photography, and theater arts. We look forward to our students expanding their experiences and benefiting from the intersection of the arts and science. Upcoming week is here. Join us Friday, 7:00 PM, as our Montgomery High School football team takes on Saverville High School, and enjoy the amazing halftime performances from our cheerleaders, Cougarette Dance Squad, Squad, and our award-winning marching band. UMS students attended grade-level assemblies titled "It's Not Okay", led by the principal, Raquel Rivera, the vice principal, Martha Cardy, school counselors, and the anti-bullying specialist, Ms. Deanie Fadon, and Ms. Allison Doyle Smith. Students were reminded of the power of their own words and actions to stand up against harassment, intimidation, and bullying by saying "it's not okay". Additionally, UMS had their first social of the year hosted by the Montgomery Middle School Parent Teacher Organization. More than 250 students attended and enjoyed the flannel-themed social refreshments, pizza, and music. At the end of the event, every student received a flannel spark. Another exciting update is the Week of Respect organized by the Culture Team. The school Cougar mascot and the NHS drumline kicked off the Respect Rally. At LMS, local veterans visited the fifth graders during lunches to share their stories, talk to them about the significance of Veterans Day, and to invite them to take part in a letter-writing contest in support of Montgomery Township's local Veterans Day celebration. Students submit letters, posters, stories, or videos of what Veterans Day means to them. The Montgomery Veterans Memorial Committee then selects 10 winners who present their submission at the Montgomery Township Veterans Day Celebration on November 11th. October, again, everybody's celebrating the Week of Respect across the district. LMS engaged in the morning meeting activities focusing on their core values of respect, responsibility, and kindness. On October 16th, the Harlem Wizards will visit LMS. This fun, interactive event is a great way to promote the Harlem Wizards. MTSD community event is scheduled for Friday, November 15th, at 7:00 PM. In celebration of Hispanic Heritage Month, village Spanish teachers hosted parent guest speakers representing Mexico, Chile, Peru, Colombia, Puerto Rico, and Argentina. Each shared the history, culture, and tradition of the countries they represented. During the Week of Respect, the village students discussed various ways to demonstrate their respect for others, themselves, and their community. The MHS peer leaders visited some classrooms to share lessons on respect. School counselors taught lessons on treating each other with kindness so everyone feels safe and comfortable in school. Digital Citizenship Week is the week, this week, October 14 through 18. Villagers are learning about building healthy habits around technology use through technology lessons and videos presented at the VES afternoon news. These topics include caring for your device, balancing technology time with other activities, respectful technology use, ways to identify and prevent cyberbullying, and managing distractions. Parents can learn more by checking out the resources, and there's a link to it on the website, Common Sense Education. Students at this building, Orchard Hill, continue to settle in for the 24-25 school year. Teachers and staff are always looking for opportunities to integrate appropriate play into their instruction, especially through opportunities like the monthly Days of Play, and visiting Cubs Cave when they can engage with various creative and imaginative materials. Both are great chances for our young students to build on routines for safe and successful play. In math, the students continue to explore number concepts to build their foundational skills and number sets. The first graders are using number racks to build equations, and in second grade, students are focused on identifying the correct operation in order to develop solutions to number stories. I love seeing the whole progression, how Respect Week goes from our youngest learners to the high school and the different events that everyone does. So, that's it for in our schools. Remember, we're going to our presentations. The first presentation I just held, the board, is part of the New Jersey Department of Education requirements to submit the Student Safety Data System Report, which is the SSDS report. Tonight, I will be reporting out on Report Period Two for the 23-24 school year, that's last school year. Report Period Two covers January 2024 through June of 2024. The incidents covered in this report are identified as violence, vandalism, substances, weapons, and HIV. So, just a brief overview, at Montgomery High School, there were 35 total incident categories reported, with the majority reported under the category of substances. Other instances, incidents, included fighting and HIV confirmed. At UMS Upper Middle School, there were 28 incidents reported, with most incidents falling under the category of HIV. At Lower Middle School, there were 37 total incidents reported, with majority reported under the category of HIV. At Village Elementary School, there were five total incidents reported, with most of them being under the category of HIV. And at Orchard Hill, there was one incident reported which fell under the category of HIV confirmed. That is my part of the report. The next report, we have Mr. Corey Delgado here. He will, as our inside bullying coordinator, his role, his new role. And he will present to us the harassment, intimidation, or bullying, HIV investigations, and trainings, and programs, which is ITP, for the 23-24 school year, period two slash fall year, and HIV grade report. Mr. Delgado.
Thank you. Been welcome, Sophia. Nice to see you. Wait for those slides to come up. Okay, as Mary said, I'll be reporting on the HIB/ITP portion of the mandatory report out. We like acronyms. Again, HIB is harassment, intimidation, and bullying, and the ITP part is investigations, trainings, and programs. Do we have a clicker, Jack, or you want to click? Jack, you want me to see if I can slide or share a slideshow with you?
Do you have it on the slide? Share with me.
Sometimes you just have to say it out loud and threaten that we're gonna do something, and then it fixes itself. Okay, so I'll be reporting out on the harassment, intimidation, and bullying investigations and trainings program, which each fall, we are required to report out on period two of the previous year. As Mary said, that is January to June. Something worth noting, there's a difference between period one and period two. Besides it being the beginning and the end of the year, period two spans six months, whereas period one spans only four months. So, you'll typically see the numbers a little bit bigger in period two. The honeymoon period is also over at that point, so some of our exceptional kids start acting a little bit more typically. Over the next couple of minutes, I'll review with us the definition for harassment, intimidation, and bullying, a little bit of information, data around the investigations, trainings, and programs offered. I'll share with you our self-assessment grades, and we'll end with just a reminder of how to report alleged incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying. So, again, I just mentioned how exceptional our students are, but occasionally, they will act typical with bad decision-making and some behaviors that are always addressed appropriately, and sometimes might fit the definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying as per the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. In order for it to meet the definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying under the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, it has to meet some criteria. So, some of that, that quite, all of that criteria is here. It starts with, it must be a gesture, written verbal, or physical act, or it can be an electronic communication, which has become more commonplace as the years go on. It can be a single incident or a series of incidents, but it must be perceived as being motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic. So, there may be mean behaviors that, again, are appropriately addressed, but they don't fit the criteria of being perceived as being motivated by an actual or perceived characteristic such as those listed there. It also must take place on school property, have a school-sponsored function, on a school bus, or off school grounds, so that basically leaves it. Really? Anyway, right? It could happen. If it finds itself in the school building, one way or another, we are going to address it. It must also substantially disrupt or interfere with the orderly operation of the school or rights of other students. So, it must meet all of that criteria, and at least one of these, a reasonable person should know under the circumstances that the act will have the effect of physically or emotionally harming a student or damaging the student's property, or placing a student in reasonable fear of physical or emotional harm, or has the effect of insulting or demeaning any student or group of students, or creates a hostile education environment for the student. Important to mention, our anti-bullying specialists have really become expert, not just in adolescent behavior, but also the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, and really how to conduct thorough comprehensive investigations. They are typically our guidance counselors. They're listed here. Our Orchard Hill School has three, Upper Middle School has three, all three counselors there, and then you'll see the three counselors from high school. The anti-bullying specialists don't just do investigations. They are mandated to attend and participate in trainings and turnkey trainings. So, they offer trainings for their colleagues throughout the year, parent trainings. They also are chairs of our school safety teams, and they do a lot of the programming in the schools. Yours truly is the anti-bullying coordinator. Here is our data on the number of investigations that took place during period two last year, and those investigations which were affirmed or founded. You'll see, we have a total of 112 reported incidences that were investigated. Twenty of those were founded to meet the definition of HIB. That's about 18%. Moving on to trainings, again, trainings are designed for the staff. Programs are designed for the students. So, these are the number of trainings that took place during period two of last school year in each building. We typically have about the same number of trainings over a school year. Some buildings do a little bit more on the front end, some a little bit more on the back end. And then, we'll be responsive in every school, so sometimes we'll have to add some trainings for adults and programs for students as well. So, here's some examples of the trainings. The trainings include the legal aspects of the law, how to conduct investigations, policy, and most importantly, prevention. So, this is just a listing of a few of the trainings. Moving into programs, again, programs are designed for the students, and again, you'll see some differences in numbers. Typically, over the length of an entire school year, it equals out, but it ebbs and flows during the school year. So, trainings include assembly programs. They include some very explicit, direct information, sharing of information regarding the law. We have things that are embedded into our curriculum. Couple worth mentioning here, we have recently partnered with a gentleman named Jared Campbell over the last couple of years, who has a really effective program, and he delivers to our elementary schools. You heard some of the Week of Respect programming that took place earlier this month. Erica Brand delivered an amazing assembly program to our high school last year around resilience and treating each other the way that you would want to be treated. Every fall, we have to submit a self-assessment report. Every school safety team will gather sometime between the end of the previous school year or the beginning of the current school year to complete the self-assessment. The self-assessment report is being shared here with you tonight, and will be formally submitted at the end of the month. Again, this is for last year's trainings, programs, investigations, et cetera. The self-assessment has eight elements that we assess ourselves on. A total of maximum score, maximum score of 78. You can see the different categories there. I won't read them to you, but I'll let that sit there for a moment. Here's a little five-year look back on how we have scored. And then, this is how the teams assess themselves, assess each of their respective schools for the 23-24 school year. And then, lastly, worth mentioning that we do encourage students and parents to report. We don't expect students and parents to be experts in the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, but we do expect them to report it to the experts so that we can take appropriate action and bring resolve to any incidents and support those students who might be on the victim or receiving side of that misconduct. Staff is mandated to report. It is a standardized form that's used across the state of New Jersey, which is found on the website, that we encourage the written report to accompany a verbal report, and it can be done anonymously.
Mary, since we have Mr. Delgado here, do you think it would be appropriate for him to highlight some of the changes that we're looking to implement for the policy? Just since we have him, and it's gonna be his responsibility.
Sure. Do you want to wait until the policy report?
No, I don't want to do it. Corey can do it.
So, at our Policy and Communications Committee meeting, one of the policies that's up for our first read this evening is our HIV policy. And Corey did a lot of work in investigation, and as you can see, the amount of reported HIBs to the amount that were actually founded as HIBs was significantly different. And that is because we chose to not utilize when the policy first came out, because there wasn't a lot of guidance on what to do if you did do it, and now there's more guidance on principal discretion. So, you want to take it from there, Mr. Delgado?
Yeah, I'll try to be brief. There is, New Jersey has the option to adopt a clause in the policy which allows for something called preliminary determination. So, when a report of alleged harassment, intimidation, and bullying is received by the principal, today, that would be an automatic HIV investigation without measuring it against any of the criteria of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights. You use that trigger word, and for the, we do use common sense, but for the most part, most of those reports will get investigated. Those investigations can be unnecessarily burdensome, and sometimes even cause more trauma and frustration and confusion. So, we are, I am hopeful that we are going to adopt the clause which allows for preliminary determination. So, now, when that initial report comes in, the principal, in consultation with the anti-bullying specialist, will look at it to see if it meets a threshold level of criteria before it goes down into a formal HIV investigation. It might, it will be, it will be addressed appropriately. It might not need a formal HIV investigation. And so, that preliminary determination, I hope, will relieve some of our anti-bullying specialists. It will hopefully reduce some of the students that need to be, we use the word interviewed and investigated. We use big adult litigious words with little kids sometimes when we're doing this. And so, hopefully, we'll be able to handle some of these things a little bit in a developmentally appropriate way, but outside of the harassment, intimidation, and bullying formal investigation. You saw, last year, we had, overall, we had almost 170 investigations with less than 30 were confirmed. So, we're over-investigating, and hopefully, this will help us. We will always err on the side of looking at it as a HIB. If there's any uncertainty, we are gonna investigate it as a HIB. And it's really important to understand that even when misconduct or incidents don't meet the definition of HIB, investigated or not, it doesn't mean it didn't happen. It doesn't mean it wasn't awful and mean and disgusting. It just doesn't meet the criteria to be categorized as harassment, intimidation, bullying as per the law.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. I just want to say, I think it's, I'm sorry, it's just important to note again that all reports will be investigated, whether they will be investigated through the ABS or investigated through the Code of Conduct and the principal, that's where the, yeah, that's where it comes in.
And so, next year, part of the report will be, I'll be here to tell you how many alleged incidences were reported, but not investigated as HIB. So, that's something we need to keep track of as well.
Thank you, Mr. Delgado. You articulated it way better than.
There's a couple of questions.
Okay. So, I had a question, but you've answered some of them already. I think my first question is based on the HIV report, the presentation. What would you attribute the huge bubble at LMS to? Because that was a huge one. I don't know if you can go back to it, but it was like over 50 reported, and only three found. And then, I noticed that there was 11 trainings, which was higher at LMS, so I had some, just what's your?
Yeah, I think that the trainings and the programs are a responsive move towards the number of incidences that were occurring at LMS. So, yeah, I mean, that age group is primed for making some bad decisions and unfiltered conversations and all kinds of emotions, right? So, there's a lot that happens down there typically. That was an unusual number of incidences. We did have some repeat offenders. We did have some groups of students that tended to be in conflict pretty regularly. Again, most of those cases did not meet the definition of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, but were addressed through the Code of Conduct.
So, there is, yeah, I was, when you see like duplicates, right? So, you'd have multiple reports. You may have multiple people involved.
That happens, yeah. So, you know, Maria could have done something to Corey that's being looked at, and then Corey says, "Oh, yeah, well, Maria did this to me." And we're gonna look at that one. So, that was happening a lot.
Okay, and, what was it? There was something else. Do you think there was any confirmation bias for those trainings? I feel like, you know, the encouragement of, of, you know, teaching students about, "Report, please report," because, you know, it's better to report than any of that possibly.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, I do. So, I think that sometimes, the more you're training, the more it's in conversation, the more students, parents, and staff are thinking about it, and the more it gets reported. Yeah, that could have been happening a little bit too.
And then, one last thing about the changes, because I do have some questions on that, because it's our first, so if we're gonna talk about that, I'm just gonna keep it right here. So, will this alleviate some of the reports then, where like it says, in the category of motivation, it'll list no identifiable nature alleged only? And so, there would be none of those reports being sent out to the board because those would be stopped at the principal level?
Correct. If it was clear at first report in like a surface-level glance, yes. And then, we might look into that. A vice principal might pursue that incident that doesn't appear to be motivated by any of those characteristics. And upon looking at it through the Code of Conduct, they might discover, "Oh, maybe this was motivated by a characteristic." Then it can come back onto the HIB side, absolutely, yes. But, yeah, we would hope that that would happen.
All right. I look forward to the data after a year of.
A little start November 20th after our next board meeting.
Corey, just one last question. Can you talk a little about, a little bit about, if you can, the role of social media in some of these incidences?
Yeah, so it's interesting, because there's really, like, there's no jurisdiction anymore, right? So, something can happen on social media on a Saturday night. It finds its way into a guidance counselor's office on a Monday morning, and now it's in our lap, and we're addressing it. Cyberbullying is not always harassment, intimidation, and bullying, but there is a lot of students who are new to their phones and are using language that they don't typically, even just through text messaging. But definitely, they're using gaming platforms, text messaging, social media. We, I do think we are seeing students be more responsible in their usage. I do see a trend in that direction. I think they're either smarter, or they're reporting less, or they're just being nicer. I don't know. But we are seeing less incidences than we used to on social media, but the preponderance of cases that we're investigating are somehow electronic. Yeah, for sure.
I have one more question. Kind of piggybacking off of that, I know that with, you know, a lot of times the HIB reports, you know, these incidents could happen, cellphone, lunchroom, buses, classroom. Are you guys analyzing that, or looking into that, or during trainings assessing maybe some of those key areas, and how to, I guess, educate the students or help support the staff on what to do next to kind of decrease those numbers?
Yeah, that's exactly, I would say, the main purpose of our school safety teams. So, they're taking a look at the data. They're looking for trends. They're finding times of day, places in the building, groups of students, certain populations, subgroups on the offender side and the victim side. So, that's a big part of our school safety teams. They meet at least twice a year, but typically, they'll meet more as needed. They meet at least twice a year, but typically, they'll meet more as needed. So, yeah, that's one of the fundamental purposes of that team. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Our next presentation is our statewide assessment results for the 22, 23, 24 school year, and Dr. Stacy Young, our Director of Equity, Data, and Accountability, is here to present.
Thank you. Hi, everyone, good evening. Stacy Young, Director of Equity, Data, and Accountability, and is here tonight to share out on our 23, 24 statewide assessment results. In this presentation, we'll be talking about the ACCESS, the Dynamic Learning Maps, or DLM, and the NJSLA. Before we jump into the data, it's important that I remind everyone that the state of New Jersey does have student confidentiality laws, and essentially, what they say is that when we're reporting data publicly, if there's any particular grade level or subgroup that does not meet a minimum N size, which in this case is 10, and we can't publicly share that data. So in a few instances throughout this presentation, you'll find that some of that data is suppressed, and that's why. We'll start by taking a look at the ACCESS. The ACCESS stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State for English Language Learners. So this is a test that's given annually to monitor students' progress for our multilingual learners. It's anchored in the LEEDA, English Language Development Standards, which assesses listening, speaking, reading, and writing. All of our students who get a 12, who have been identified as multilingual learners, or MLs, or in some cases also categorized as ELLs, English Language Learners, took this test between February and April of last school year. These are the proficiency levels for the ACCESS, starting with entering, which is where a student knows and uses minimal social and academic language, all the way through to reaching, where a student has the ability to use social and academic language at the highest level as measured by the test. Because we don't meet the minimum N size of participation for the ACCESS, they can't share the data by grade level, but what it can do is share district-wide percentages by those performance levels. So you'll see here across the bottom, left to right, from entering to reaching, and the largest majority of our students are sitting at developing and expanding 34% and 41%, The next administration of the ACCESS will take place between February and March of Moving on to the Dynamic Learning Maps, or the DLM, this is an alternate assessment in ELA and Math in Science that's for our students with the most significant intellectual disabilities. For this particular assessment, there are no performance-level students aren't compared to other students, but rather evaluated for their own progress. Similarly to NJSLA, students in grades 3 to 8 and grade 11 participate in ELA and Math, and students in grades 5, 8, and 11 participate in Science. Those who are eligible for the DLM is determined by the child study team. Students who qualify for this assessment took it between April and May of last school year. We don't meet the minimum N size of participation for the DLM, so scores cannot be publicly The next administration of DLM will take place between April and May of 2025. Moving then into the New Jersey Student Learning Assessment, or the NJSLA, we're going to start by taking a look at ELA for our students. The NJSLA ELA assessment has five performance levels. I have them in sort of traffic light colors there, with Level 1 in the red being not yet meeting grade level expectations, through to that darker green, which is exceeding grade level expectations. Dislaid in this chart here is a 2022, 23, and 24 district-wide comparison of ELA percentages across those five performance levels. We're going to look at this data in a much more digestible way in the next few slides. Starting first with our percentages of meeting and exceeding in ELA. Our district is in the green, and the state of New Jersey is in that gold color. And you can see, beginning with grade 3, that 58% of our students were meeting or exceeding in ELA. Grade 4, 74% were. Grade 5, 81%. Grade 6, 85%. Grade 7, 93%. Grade 8, 87%. And grade 9 came in at 88% meeting or exceeding in ELA. Taking a look at that, same ELA data, this time broken up by subgroup race, you can see the categories identified on the bottom there. Our Asian students met or exceeded in ELA at 88%. Our Black students at 46%. Our Hispanic students at 64%. Our multiracial students at 77%. And our white students at 76% meeting or exceeding in ELA. Broken up this time by gender, our female students met or exceeded in ELA at 85%. And our male students at 78%. And broken up by program, our economically disadvantaged students met or exceeded in ELA at about 50%. Our students with disabilities at 36%. Our multilingual learners at 31%. And our general education population at 89%. This is all of the categories that are just mentioned, the 22, 23, 24 comparison. And if you take a look at that third column from the left, you'll see MTSD. And you can see in 2022, we met or exceeded in ELA standards at 73%. In 2023, that number went up to 78%. And in 2024, we saw an increase still at 82% meeting and exceeding. So notably, the majority of our grade levels and our subgroups are back to or above pre-pandemic achievement levels and trending up, as I just mentioned. A high percentage of students in each grade level are meeting or exceeding, most notably in grades 5 to 9. Those particular grade levels, we have over 80% of our students meeting or exceeding. In terms of interventions, the past couple of years, we've implemented the STAR360 Assessment Platform, which is aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Standards, and that helps us to identify any gaps in students' learning and address them appropriately. The state of New Jersey updated the New Jersey Student Learning Standards for English Language Arts as of 2024. So we did update our curriculum, and we aligned to some of those new standards, which included adding a core explicit phonics program for grades 1 to 4. We added some additional foundational writing skills at the elementary level as well, in addition to some more explicit vocabulary instruction. At our high school and our middle schools, we're continuing with the STAR360 Assessment Platform, and at the high school, continuing with the Literacy Lab course and the ELA clinics in advance of state testing, as we've certainly seen an increase in those numbers over the past couple of years as a result. Moving then into math. Couple of important things to note before we take a look at the math data. In grade 8, students begin to take high school math assessments, which is different from ELA. Everybody takes the grade 8 ELA, but for math, students might be taking other math NJSLA assessments. So it's important to note that the 8th grade data that we'll look at is not the 8th grade performance as a whole. And it's also important to note that Algebra 1, Geometry, and Algebra 2 is not going to include our grade 11 and 12 students, as our grade 11 students take the NJGPA. And that data was reported out through the summer. Math has the same five performance levels as ELA. And again, this is just that 22, 23, 24 comparison, district-wide across all five of those performance levels, but we'll take a look at that broken down. We'll start with the meeting and exceeding percentages for math. Again, we are in the green, and the state of New Jersey is in the gold for comparison. And all of the grade levels and subjects tested are going across the bottom, so you can see our 3rd graders came in at 74% meeting or exceeding. Our 4th graders at 75. Our 5th graders at 76. Our 6th graders at 74%. Our 7th graders at 82. Our 8th graders at 38. And then we move into the courses, our middle school, Algebra 1 students came in at 99% meeting or exceeding. The Algebra 1 students at the high school came in at 47. Our geometry students at 97, middle school. Our geometry students at the high school at 65, and the Algebra 1 students at 88% meeting or exceeding. Broken down by subgroup race, our Asian students came in at 88% meeting or exceeding in math. Our Black students at 28%. Our Hispanic students at 45%. Our multiracial students at 69%. And our white students at 66% meeting or exceeding in math. Our female students came in at 74% meeting or exceeding in math, and our male students came in at 78%. And then taking a look at program here, students who are economically disadvantaged came in at 29% meeting or exceeding in math. Our students with disabilities at 30. Our multilingual learners at 43. And our general population at 83% meeting or exceeding. This is the 22, 23, 24 comparison, district-wide, meeting or exceeding in math. And again, if you look at that third column from the left there, that's the MTSD. And in 2022, we were at 67% meeting or exceeding. In 23, we saw an increase there, came up to 74% meeting or exceeding district-wide. And in 2024, an increase still coming in at 76% meeting or exceeding. So in terms of notable achievements, again, the majority of our grade levels are back to, and pre-pandemic achievement levels trending up. A high percentage of our students who meet grade level and course are meeting or exceeding grade level standards, with approximately 75% meeting or exceeding. But also really notable, I think we need to shout out our middle school Algebra 1 students who met or exceeded math's expectations at 99%. In terms of interventions for math, just a couple of years ago, we implemented the new math program, Bridges. Since receiving score steadily increased, we're going to keep at it with that. Our middle school, VNS, we added an additional interventionist, which allows just more students to receive Tier 2 and Tier 3 interventions, and we'll talk a little bit about, or a little bit more about what those look like in a couple of slides. And just last year, we implemented a restructuring of our courses for Math 7 and 8, and the full-year Algebra 1 course for 8th grade, so we're really only in the second year of that, and we need to see that through with fidelity to see if it's working for us. And similarly to ELA, we have the Math Lab and the Math Connections course, in addition to the Math Clinics in advance of state testing, which are for students who demonstrate need for additional targeted support. Moving then into science. Science is a little different than ELA and math. The science assessment only has four performance levels, which you can see there, beginning with minimal, which is a student demonstrates a minimal understanding of the New Jersey Student Learning Standards in Science, through to that darker green, which is advanced, which is a student demonstrating advanced understanding of those standards. Students who take the NJSLA in Science are only assessed in three grade levels, and that's grades 5, 8, and 11. And you can see here, that's the 22, 23, 24 comparison, across those four proficiency levels in the three grade levels that were tested. And we'll take a look at that broken down. So you can see here, represented in the green, and the state of New Jersey in the gold, this is our proficient and advanced proficient percentages. So you can see the grade 5 came in at 64%, grade 8 at 53%, and grade 11 at 74% proficient or advanced proficient. This is the science data broken up by race. Our Asian students came in at 75% proficient or advanced. Our Black students at 24%. Our Hispanic students at 31%. Our multiracial students at 57%. And our white students at 55%. Our female students came in at 63% proficient or advanced in science, and our male students at 66%. Broken up by program, our economically disadvantaged students came in at 18% proficient or advanced proficient. Our students with disabilities at 17%. Our multilingual learners at 10%. And our general education population at 7% proficient or advanced proficient. And then again here, that 22, 23, 24 comparison. If I draw your attention to the third column there, which says MTSD, in 2022, we were at 60% proficient or advanced proficient. That stayed consistent for 2023, and then in 2024, we fell up to 65% proficient or advanced proficient. Notably for science, approximately 75% of our 11th grade students are meeting or exceeding grade level expectations. And I also think it's important to note that we just have a very strong commitment and interest in science. Over 200 students were enrolled in a full-year science elective at our high school, and this is beyond graduation requirements, this is just because they are interested and want to learn more about science. In terms of interventions, our middle school just implemented a new resource, the Carolina SDCMS, and that is phenomenon-based, and based in real life, it's authentic, and aligned to the New Jersey Student Learning Three-Dimensional Science Standards. So we're excited to see how that rolls out this school year. Some additional interventions. Here in the state of New Jersey, we use the New Jersey Tiered System of Support, sometimes also referred to as the Multi-Tiered System of Supports. And it has three levels of intervention. Tier 1 is essentially the universal support to all students, any student can receive this kind of support in the classroom, it might be something as simple as a graphic organizer, or chunked assignments, or text set at a reading level, et cetera. If a student demonstrates the need for additional support beyond a Tier 1 intervention, we move it to Tier 2, and that's more targeted classroom support. It could include small group instruction, in and out of the classroom, or intervention lessons on like a particular standard or skill. And if still a student is demonstrating need for additional targeted support, we move into that intensive individual intervention. I think it's important to note that our teams here are regularly monitoring, analyzing, and discussing data, not just this snapshot of data, which the ACCESS, the DLM, and the NJSLA are, they're one data point in time, but really taking a look at all of the formative incentive assessments that we provide to our students throughout the school year, using it to determine the efficacy of our instructional practices in our curriculum, to, in other words, find gaps in students' learning and adequately address them. So that is constantly happening in our day-to-day here. Moving forward, the next administration of the NJLSLA is going to take place between April and May of 2025. That's it. At this point, I'm happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you, Ms. Young. I do have one question. On the math, one math slide, there was a big dip between 7th and 8th grade, 7th and 9th grade. Any reasoning behind that?
Yeah, that's because, let's just get to the 8th grade, they can start to take a variety of different assessments. That's only applicable to math and not ELA. So all 8th graders will take the same ELA, NJSLA assessment, but when you get to math, they could be taking grade 8, they could be taking Algebra 1, they could be taking Geometry, so you start to see a split in the data, and that's often why we see that dip for 8th grade math. And that's consistent statewide, it's not just our district.
So additionally, other statewide trends over time, you know, that we see are the dips in proficiencies of our MLs, our SWDs, and our Black and Brown students. And so what are we doing to help those populations? I know there's no magic bullet and anything like that, but tell us, tell us what we're doing and try to get more of those yellows into green.
Yeah, thank you for that question. You're absolutely right that some of our historically marginalized and underrepresented populations do tend to underperform as compared to their peers. That is historical and has a pretty complex answer, but what I can say to that is with all of our students, regardless of whatever subpopulation they fit into, we are using assessment data on a day-to-day basis to figure out, you know, where the holes are in their Swiss cheese, what gaps they have, and to address them with the appropriate interventions. So all of those students fit into those populations that we're addressing on a day-to-day.
How many of those students that are in those populations are counted in multiple categories of those categories?
Several. I mean, I can't give you a number, but yes. It could be exactly zero, as you're saying. Yes.
Explain.
Sure. So you can fit into a particular race and also be counted in a particular program. So you can see that student represented twice.
So if a student is economically disadvantaged, also has an IEP, and happens to be a student of color, and scores poorly, they're going to count three times?
You got it.
Okay.
Yes.
So let's talk about disadvantaging those students more and more and more, right? So let's talk about disadvantaging those students more and more and more, right? And just please keep trying to build them up.
You got it.
Have you looked at all also at continuous data over these three years? Since we now have three years of data, so tracking third graders in twenty-twenty-two to fourth grade, twenty-three, and fifth grade.
Yes, that's work that we're often doing in our team in our department meetings. Just recently, I met with our math supervisors where we took a look. What you're training is basically the cohort model. And then we're following students year to year and tracking their data along with the classes that they took and trying to understand if there's patterns and trends. So yes, that is something that we do often.
Have you seen any bubbles that you'd be cautious of or, you know, especially coming off? Like these are the first three years afterwards we had a suspension.
Yeah, I think, you know, speaking specifically for math, since that's on the top of my head, the restructuring of the courses, we're really counting on that to address some of the issues that we saw in the, in the trends.
General theme, general theme was up until the right, like very good results. What are some key takeaways from this? Like, is any of the data, any fact-based start, stop, continue informal recommendations? Things that just jumped out, because there's a lot of charts to go through. But anything that was learned from this, like how can we act on this? Any informal recommendations?
Great question. You know, honestly, the NJSLA data is really important data. I don't want to invalidate it, but I do want to say that we're constantly looking at what our students are doing right now. Because this is a snapshot. This is a snapshot from last spring. Again, important, if you do take a look at that data. But we are more often and more frequently looking at what they're working on in their classes right now and responding to that.
I kind of just to pick it back again off of that. You know, some of those areas that Maria, other students that Maria mentioned, whether it's the children who are at a disadvantage economically or of color, et cetera. Looking at them at the current moment, how are they? Are we seeing such a discrepancy in the classroom and their studies, grade-wise, report cards? I know we don't have report cards out yet, but currently, I know the testing is crucial and very important, but how are they overall functioning in the classroom? Are we seeing that there's that, does it feel like a learning gap right now? Or does that make sense?
It does make sense. It's hard to pinpoint with such a large population of students to say for sure. I think that there's certainly some gaps in, in their learning in the classroom that we're seeing and that we're responding to. And then that's later captured in the NJSLA. So I think to answer your question, yes.
I think the question was, I think that if we saw an inconsistency there, that would mean that our, our instruction and our outcomes are not aligned.
I agree with you. I think that that speaks to the efficacy of, of the assessment.
Any other questions for members?
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the superintendent's reports and presentation.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. But now moving to committee representative reports. First up, MTA report, Mr. Rizzoli.
I'm so sorry, Mr. Rizzoli. I have one more presentation. And I am so sorry because I didn't put it on the agenda.
Take that back. Sorry about that, Mr. Rizzoli.
Okay. So we are blessed and honored to have the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year, Ms. Stephanie Lockenhauer, who is a teacher at U M S. Being the State Teacher of the Year, her calendar has been filled. Like she wouldn't be able to make it to a board meeting this year. That's how many night events she has. So I want to start with a little bit of a history and the process. So for the first time since I have been employed here, which was July of twenty thirteen. So I don't know when prior to that Montgomery participated in the Educator of the Year program. We initiated it back again last year. So each school had a Teacher of the Year. It was a wonderful time. We all went to Somerset County Educator of the Year breakfast, and everybody was honored. It was a wonderful experience for our teachers. They were highlighted. It was great. And then every Teacher of the Year in all of Somerset County, so think about every single school in all of the towns in Somerset County have the opportunity to apply to be the Somerset County Teacher of the Year. And so the first year out, doing it in more than at least eleven years. Montgomery got the Somerset County Teacher of the Year. So then of all the counties in New Jersey, the county teachers of the year have the opportunity to apply to be the State Teacher of the Year. And once again, Montgomery has the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year for twenty-twenty-five. So in, on September twenty-third, there was a surprise visit from the Acting Commissioner of Education. And so Ms. Rivera, the principal, and I, we knew ahead of time that we had to keep it top secret. And in fact, the state actually sent her an email. I was on the phone with Ms. Rivera late on a Friday evening doing work for this big event, right? We have security and we had to have everything needed because there were political dignitaries here. There were state dignitaries here. Our own dignitaries came. And so it was a huge process and a huge event planning. And we worked closely with the event planner from the state, Nancy Bouson. Anyway, I'm on the phone with Raquel, and we're going through the list and who's going to park where and how we're going to do it. And do we need a stage? Do we not need a stage? All of the nitty-gritty details. And she says, oh, no, Stephanie just texted me that she just got an email that she unfortunately has not been chosen as the New Jersey Teacher of the Year. And she's a little bummed out. And I'm like, what? What are we doing then, right? So I start calling the county officials, and they got back to me and they said, oh, no, that's part of the rules. They, they want her to be surprised. And my surprise, she might not even be there. How are we going to get her to be there? So we decided we're going to tell her that, like, we're really sorry that you got that email. And, you know, you did such a great job. You're the Somerset County Teacher of the Year. And we told everyone that the Acting Commissioner of Education was coming to do a back-to-school. He chose U M S to come and do a back-to-school assembly with all the kids. And we told Stephanie, as the Somerset County Teacher of the Year, since you're in this building, you know, we're going to recognize you as the Somerset County Teacher of the Year. So be prepared to speak, right? So, because I didn't want her to be not dressed appropriately or, you know what I'm saying, for that kind of event or not be prepared to say a couple of words. So it was a spectacular event. Many of our board members, thank you all for coming. And this is when she, if you can see her facial expression, she found out that she actually was the New Jersey State Teacher of the Year. And that woman there is the President of the State Board of Education. So we have here former State Teachers of the Year. They all came out. I mean, it was wonderful. They came out. They're, she's assigned mentors. It was really fantastic. Just show you a couple of pictures, how happy she was and surprised. These are local government officials and the Acting Commissioner. This is all of us, all the MTSD admin, board members. Mr. Rizzoli was there. It was great. Now, how do I do this? Do I click it again or do you have to click it? So Stephanie felt that she couldn't be here.
Glad you guys. First, thank you so much, Commissioner, to all of our students who've been here, our board of commissioners here, all of our board administration, the principal, Rivera, the vice principal, and our party, the board principal, Sarah Bado. And of course, my amazing colleagues, Megan, and the U L S staff. And our students, who did not be here without you, who make every day amazing for us. So we know that in order to have self-care, we need community here. We know that in order to be our best to ourselves, but we can't do it alone. We know that if we want to be successful, we need each other. We need to do it together. And we can see that all the things we do here in your next office, we see in our charities, we can see in our core values, community acceptance, resilience, and empathy. We see in our after-school clubs are already here at our school. And we can see in our daily interactions. It is my great honor to be able to represent Montgomery Public School, to represent Montgomery Township, Somerset County, and now the great state of New Jersey. All of us. Academic matters, self-care matters, community matters. What we do matters. And we do it better when we do it together. So let's make this great year together.
So I should leave that speech. I'm sitting there saying they think I told them. I told her because that was such a spectacular speech, and she was so inspirational. But like I said, this was like the top secret. They had their own media. They had their own security. And we were, you know, told to just pretend like this is the commissioner coming to do an assembly at your school. So she was honored then again at the New Jersey State Board of Education meeting. And the NJEA, ETS, the testing company, the State Board, the New Jersey Department of Education personnel were all there. And it's really important to note that the NJEA and ETS are great sponsors of it. And they're making it so that she can go on a sabbatical this year to go and do her duties as the State Teacher of the Year. She has to, you know, travel around not only the state of New Jersey, but she has to go to Washington for national events and things like that as the state rep. So this is big. And for Montgomery saying, oh, no, we'll try it this year to go into the Educator of the Year. And we're in the process right now for this year's Montgomery, you know, Based on School Teacher and Support Staff of the Year. So I hope you all and all the parents nominated your favorite best teacher for the kids. So again, Stephanie said that she sends her best. I said, let me just show your speech. And now you know why she is the State Teacher of the Year. So thank you. Now, Mr. Rizzoli, I'm sorry. I am really done this time.
All right. Good evening. Well, I don't know if you've heard, but Stephanie Lockenhauer won the State Teacher of the Year. Didn't know you've got the message. So other than that, MTA has been doing the Halloween Costume Exchange. Been extremely successful. We've gotten so many costumes. On October eighteenth and nineteenth, people can go to U M S and get a new costume for them, a new-to-you costume. So we're going to continue that. After that, on October twenty-first, we're doing Trick and Treats, where people can come to the U M S parking lot and they can pick up some kind of Halloween treat, plus a book for any of the MTSD students that would like to participate. Will be set up that day. After the Halloween Costume Exchange, we're going to be starting something new this year. We'll do a winter clothing exchange. So the same exact thing that we did for the costumes, we're going to do, where we're going to put boxes in the schools, and we'll go around and collect them. And then in a future date, we will have it so that people can come kind of pick up either jackets or gloves, scarves, things that, people that are lightly used. And we're also going to be sponsoring the Wade's Army Five K. So MTA is going to try to put a team in there together. And we're going to have a table. We're going to sponsor some waters to purchase a great cause for a family and district. And then finally, we're going to be doing FMLA, NJFLA. Just presentation for our members. It can be really tricky to kind of navigate some of those waters. So we're going to have that upcoming soon. So thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Rizzoli. Do we have any board member, delegate, or representative reports this evening?
Yes. I'm going to give Ms. Dowling her word, since she has laryngitis, I guess. So this is for MCEPTA, which the meeting was on October first. MCEPTA is the Montgomery Special Education Parent Teacher Association. So it is a PTA organization that fundraises for all grades K through twelve. And it's a collaborative organization where the parents actually come together and use each other as, to make connections and to find out what resources and things they can use in the community and the schools for children with disabilities. And some of the ways that they raise money that they wanted to share out is that there is an annual dance, an auction fundraiser, which usually occurs in the winter, springtime, cookie sale, and then obviously memberships. There is a donation bin, just like there is at every other, at all of the schools in Montgomery. There's different donation bins. And the one at Orchard Hill is the one that produces funding for MCEPTA. Some of the things that they've done in the past and want to continue to do is to help sponsor sporting events like the Winter Bowl for our LLD and autism classrooms, as well as involvement with our Unified Club, hosting workshops or fundraisers. We do, we welcomed at the last meeting Ms., how do I say it? Derimer?
Derimer.
Derimer, sorry. Michelle Derimer, who is our new Director of Student Services. And she was there to introduce herself, as well as Mr. Rizzoli was there. And that was really great to have representation from the district at the MCEPTA meeting. There was a request for better communication between the teachers and the parent organization, really wanting to get more participation, especially families in the lower grades with students with special needs to come on and kind of be taken under the wings of some of the parents of older students that are looking to mentor and bring on new leadership as well. Some events are the college readiness for students with learning differences, which will be on November twelfth. And you can find details of that on the MCEPTA newsletters, which are attached to all of the PTA newsletters. General meeting dates will happen in January, on the eighth, the fourth of March, May sixth, and June third. And we'll have tentative dates, like I said, for February or March for that big fundraiser, which is the Dance and Auction. Please, if you have a student with special needs, I encourage you to participate with MCEPTA. And that's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, VPs. Speaking of any questions on that report? Any other board member or delegate reports?
Yes, the Somerset County School Board Association County Meeting took place on October tenth in Somerset Botec High School in Bridgewater. It's always a great event to participate and meet board members from other school districts. Couple of items that were covered that were of interest were update from the county executive superintendent on what's the latest within the county, as well as we had an overview of what's coming up during the NJSPA workshop for twenty-twenty-four. That's going to be happening next week. But one of the more interesting presentations that I saw was around the potential of AI on education and how do we prepare schools for the future? We actually had a random Board of Education member, who is also a mentor and NJXL instructor, walk us through a very comprehensive view on AI and how colleges today are managing the knowledge, and then provided some suggestions for the school boards. And I know our administration is already working on collaborating around how do we implement some of the ways of utilizing AI within the school district. So it was very informative, and I appreciated his time and sharing his knowledge.
Thank you, board member. We're looking at joining you. Any questions on that report? Are we not any other reports? Moving to board committee reports, assessment curriculum and instruction committee, ACI.
I'll be brief to spare you. The bulk of the present discussion we met on October fourth at nine AM, it was both virtual and in person. The bulk of the meeting revolved around the assessment presentation. It was a preview, which we just saw this evening, given by Dr. Young. But I also wanted to highlight that we heard from Ms. Bordland about the pre-K report card. Since we started the pre-K program, all districts in the, sorry, the states asked all districts. the pre-K program, all districts in the, sorry, the states asked all districts who've had a preschool program to pick one of the three preschool curriculums that had been recommended. As a school, we have chosen the creative curriculum, and so this will be implemented. In the past, we had a report card through the Genesis program, which was very much in-house and homegrown. Because we've purchased the creative curriculum and we will execute it in our pre-K classrooms, we will, that will also include the gold assessment, which is an assessment that's nationally normed, and it's known as a preschool assessment, which assesses kindergarten readiness. Some of the areas that it taps into is social emotional development, physical development, as in gross and fine motor skills, language and literacy, and approaches for learning. I also just wanted to highlight that Mr. Delgado talked about upcoming events that all have to do with counseling and college readiness. And as of date, we have had 300 parent participants in these events that have occurred. So I encourage you to look on the website for upcoming events in October through December. Thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none. Now move to operations facilities and finance committee, OFF. I will be punctuating for board member FELAC. OFF met on October 9th virtually. Mike O'Neal led a discussion on the status of the school facilities, reported that everything is running properly and any small repairs are being addressed as they occur. Mr. Trenton and Mr. O'Neal discussed the following projects slash potential projects, which include the Rod Grant roofing project, turf field in front of the high school, long-range facility plan, and potential new pathways to the track at UMS. Mr. Trent went over the budget, calendar, and procedures, discussed the fiscal year budget and the calendar, and OFF committee will be providing feedback as we move through the process. Mr. Trent also informed us that the auditor will be making a presentation at the November board meeting. That was it. The meeting was very brief. Any questions?
No questions, but one thing. So on behalf of one of the parents that was at that MSEPDA meeting that I spoke of earlier, who actually did request that we make the UMS track more accessible for students with disabilities or community members with disabilities, so a pathway to get from the parking lot to the track would be great. Thank you so much.
And we've already contacted the architect and started looking at UMS.
Human Resources Committee also met. The only items we talked about were items that we want to discuss in the second session. Policy and Communications Committee report.
Okay, so on the policy, you've heard this evening, Mr. Delgado talk about the latest changes to the policy 5512, which is harassment, intimidation, and bullying, where the policy was revised to include a section around principles for preliminary determination. In addition to that, we reviewed policies 8420, emergency and crisis situations, as well as 8467, which is firearms and weapons. Those policies were updated to follow state statutes and administrative code. And those were the only changes as we met in the prior week. So I'll hand it over to Cookie for communications.
As we requested, so moving forward, all of us will be receiving e-bests that are significant information about, in with the school districts, because if you don't sign up, if you don't have a student at that school, you don't sign up, you don't get the information. So moving forward, Ryan will be making sure that we get anything that is relevant to the board business. The other thing that I had brought up, which would probably eventually be a crossover to OFF, I had asked at the last September meeting regarding corporate sponsorships for sports. I've been attending games across Somerset County and noticed that some schools have engaged with their local businesses and have significant presence in their own fields. So I had asked the superintendent inquiry if that is something that we would consider doing to help our sports programs instead of that being solely a school budget to cover. And we do have a policy 6162 that covers corporate sponsorship. And in prior years, prior boards did not wish to pursue these sponsorships. However, since I brought it up, and I hope folks would have the same interest as I do, to offer sponsors the opportunity to provide support to the district through financial material means in exchange for recognition and/or acknowledgement from the district. So the policy outlines guidelines, and the athletic director is working to create parameters and levels of sponsorship to follow. That's all.
All right. Any questions on Policy and Communications Committee report? Hearing none. At this time, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September 2024 Executive Session 1, September 17, 2024 Executive Session 2, September 17, 2024 Business Meeting.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second to adopt the minutes. Any questions on the motion? Oh, Mr. Trent, oral call, please. All those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same right? Extinctions. Motion carries. This time, the board acknowledges the correspondence of the board listed in the agenda. At this time, the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only, for up to a maximum three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your name, full name, and address, and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages the affirmative and discourages remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. When making comments, please specify the action agenda item number. Public comment for action agenda items is now open.
Is it about the agenda or is it about something?
That will be the.
That would be after the action agenda.
Any comments for the action agenda items? Hearing none. Public comment section is now closed. At this time, I will accept the motion to adopt the agenda, action agenda items 1.0 through 4.3.
Before you, should I ask a question about one of us, or do I have to wait? So.
It's been properly moved and second to adopt action agenda items 1.0 through 4.3. Any questions or discussions on the agenda items?
Yes, on 3.5, which is the submission of the comprehensive maintenance plan. The maintenance plan, even for the previous year, 2324, was disproportionately higher for OHES than the other buildings. Is this because of the EC building?
Yes.
Okay. And is the EC building ever going to be parsed out from that, since it is a separate building?
Not at this point, no.
Okay. Just because.
It's considered part of OHES. It's on the same property.
So even though it's two separate structures, so that, just because of how it then looks? Okay, thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Any other questions, comments on action agenda items 1.0 to 4.3?
Just for 1.6, I just want to make sure that I can request for the board to have a board retreat in March of next year to be able to talk about our progress and the actual items moving forward, having to deal with the district calls.
Still do, thank you. Any other questions, comments on action agenda items 1.0 to 4.3? Hearing none. Oral call, Mr. Trent.
Ms. Dowler.
Yes.
Ms. Franko-Herman.
Yes.
Ms. Harris.
Yes.
Ms. Leica-Jernigan.
Yes.
Ms. Sina.
Yes.
Mr. Todd.
Yes.
Thank you. All motions carried.
Thank you, Mr. Trent. At this time, the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allowed an opportunity to bring any new business to the board for a maximum, for up to a maximum three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Before you make your comment, please state your full name and address, and enter both on the Chromebook provided. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages affirmative and discourages remarks. The public comment portion of the meetings are not structured as question-and-answer sessions. The board may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command, usually starting at the school level. Responses may be provided to the end of this session. Public comments are now open.
Hello, thank you so much. Thank you for this time. I'm here today, this is my first Board of Education meeting. I've been in this community for 11 years. I'm here today as a concerned parent due to a recent incident that has happened. I have two kids in the school district, and one of my kids goes to the upper middle school. And recently, an incident happened, at least just a couple of weeks after the school has started, where she's a victim of bullying. And this has happened on a Saturday through some text exchanges, where the kids, there was a group of text messages going around, where it was almost where the other kid wanted my kid to be dead. And, you know, there were the exchanges, text exchanges where he, where the other person almost had said that she needs to be isolated, she has to, we have to make her life miserable, we have to make sure she doesn't have friends, we, I, we need to, I would like to see her, you know, almost to the, he used the word that, so which, while my daughter reached out to her previous teacher, and that has raised a safety alert, and the principal has reached out immediately on that Saturday. I did file a HIP report on this happened, incident happened on September 21st. I don't want to reveal the names here. This, I filed the report on 24th. Today is October 15th. I've heard the HIP report that was presented here. I've gone through HIP on our district website. What I want to say is the kind of exchanges that have happened in the text, it has deeply were concerning. And I was almost disappointed because I've been in the school district, I have a lot of, lot of faith in the school district. I'm not saying, you know, I have spoken to the principal after, because I was concerned about the safety of my daughter, and she was deeply traumatized for the, by this incident. She did not go to school for a day or two, after which we had to encourage her. I was deeply concerned of her safety. And, you know, she keeps asking for us to move away from the school district, but that's a separate incident. But what I am, I was really concerned, especially looking at all of the incidents that are happening around the country. This to me felt as a psychological, something is going on with, I was almost concerned for the other kid, to be honest, as well. And when I spoke to the principal, yes, there was an immediate alert and, you know, safety alert that happened, and there were things going on.
Thank you.
So I did not, I just need one more minute, please.
I'm sorry, public comment is restricted to 30 for you, three minutes for everybody.
Okay, if there's more time, can I continue?
Yeah, after all comments are heard, if there's time, we'll let you go back.
Okay, thank you.
Hi. Write your name.
Deepa. All right, so my name is Deepa. So I have two concerns. One concern was mine, and the second one actually stemming out what I heard. I just want to understand this whole principle of education is to uplift kids, right? That's where we are in the business of education. And if the parents' concerns are not adequately addressed, being a line of concern, of chain of command, I understand, thank you for that, teachers, principals, and so on. And then what's next? If parents are saying it's not addressed adequately, what's next? It's full stop, just like you cut somebody, three minutes. Rules are made for simplicity of life. Life is not made for rules. And unfortunately, we are the best district in New Jersey, one of the best districts. And this is what we are doing. We are imposing our life to fit into principles of rules. Yes, we need rules so that society is civil, society is structured. But rules are not meant that, oh, just, you cannot leave because we made a virtual wall. So my concern is, we have reached up to Mr. Todd, and all we got is one line response that this was addressed at school. We were so deeply concerned that two days after the school, my kid is an aid trader, we pulled the kid out of the school, and he's going in private school after paying so much taxes here. We pulled the kid out. Our concerns was not addressed. That itself tells that. While it was not, there's not even a single person where we would talk and bring our concerns. So I think, point I'm making about my concern, and I'm in only less than two minutes, and about the lady, the life of the kid, and the life of a threatened one who may be needing some medical intervention, is that important or three minutes important? That's concern number one. And my second concern, in our case also, if the school has not addressed, that's what forced us to take it, get out. Once we took the kid out, the principal is calling. Throughout the year, we have been writing emails, crickets, zero. So I'm really concerned how the school addresses these concerns of parents. Parents are completely helpless. And I'm still 45 seconds, but thank you. Hi, it's my second time here, so I guess I can count myself as a veteran. I wanted to thank the board for listening to the public comments about the situation with the tennis courts back in July. We really appreciate your time, and you were involved in the situation. I also came to inform you that apparently the negotiations between the township and the Board of Education stalled, and the township failed to reach any agreement, or so we were told by the Board of Recreation earlier today, so that's why I'm here. I was hoping, and maybe I should say that I am not advocating necessarily for myself or for, you know, my peers, middle-aged residents and so on. I'm really concerned about the young tennis players. We're having a fantastic fall, gorgeous fall, you know, kids could play tennis, they can play outdoors, they can spend quality time, and we just failed to provide the resources, unfortunately. Princeton has 24 tennis courts, Montgomery, as it appears, has eight, six of which cannot be used during the school time, for example, because they are located at these school properties. So we're down to two courts for those residents who can play during, you know, business hours, for example. If there's anything that the board may do to facilitate that agreement, we'd appreciate it. Some of us heard anecdotally that Montgomery High School did not have a sincere intention to let those courts used by the public. We've heard that anecdotally. I kind of dismiss those concerns, because I don't know why the school would be against letting public use the courts. But anyways, if there's anything that the board. But anyways, if there's anything that's in the board's purview, the entire township, for those of us who play tennis and the kids in particular, would definitely appreciate your involvement. The second issue I was going to bring up, it looks like it's been addressed. The situation is the parking lot was an oversight, people with disabilities could not assess the tennis courts or the track facility located between the upper middle school and lower middle school courts. Those people, unfortunately, out of luck, there's no parking, there's no parking, even for people with disabilities, but I appreciate that the board is looking into that, and it looks like there's going to be an immediate solution. I don't know why, I understand that that decision was made by the township, not by the Board of Education, but it's an important, I share, I don't think we, it's important to not let people with disabilities not be able to access the facilities. Thank you, that's all, really appreciate your time and your involvement in the situation. And I cannot introduce myself, I admit that's an issue, let me know if it helps. Thank you.
You have a comment from the public?
Thank you again. So where I stopped was when they, before I filed the HIP, and when the safety alert has come up, yes, I was receiving the phone calls, I was giving, getting all the email correspondence, and once the kid was, my kid didn't want to go to school, she missed one day, and then second day, we had to talk to her and went with the, to the principal, but as the other parent has said, after that, there was nothing else. So I wanted to understand, where do the parents come in? I filed the HIP, and I, again, I filed it on 24th of September, I know there is a process. What has made me concerned is, in that meeting, I did not hear a word of no tolerance policy in the district. All I heard was, yes, there will be an investigation going on, I'm fine, I'm fine with the investigation, but I would like to understand, what is our district policy on this? I've heard today's presentation, yes, you're trying to reduce, I looked at the numbers, I'm a quantitative scientist, all I saw was numbers. What are the things, I didn't get anything objective from it, to be honest, and you're trying to reduce with the preliminary assessment now, to reduce the number, but overall, I did not see what was taken. And so far, I'm still waiting on the report, how long does it take, where do the parents come in, where is the correspondence? I have reached out last week, I was told it's still going through. I am really concerned about this incident and about the other kid. I immediately went on to see how many incidents have happened in the past year in the country, and what is, who, what was the gender, what was the age group, and that is the age group. And the kind of, if somebody comes out and says they want to see the other person dead, then that is very concerning. And exactly, we were also looking at immediately, that's my second thought, that I went around and I'm looking at what are the other school options that I could think of. So, yeah, please, I would like to hear what are the, I mean, I don't know where I should go to, but I would like to clearly hear what is our district policy. I haven't heard so far any no tolerance policy. And what are the steps that will be taken? Thank you.
You have the comments from the public? Public comment portion is now closed. Superintendent McGlocklin, do you like to address?
Yes, so on our website, under Parents of Community, there's a full page that outlines all of the HIV processes, how to report it, the timelines, the grade report, all the HIV presentations. Before you were able to access your child's schedule, you had to acknowledge that you read and understand the HIV policy, and so you click that in order to get the schedule and have access to your child's schedule. That's the policy, and that's what outlines it. So once the investigation is filed, there's a 10 days that there can, that the investigation can take place, and then it is reviewed by the findings or reviewed by the Board of Education at the following meeting, which is tonight, and then you will receive a letter tomorrow in the mail from me, and then at the next Board of Education meeting, the board will accept the findings, and then you will receive another letter from the business administrator, the board secretary, Mr. Trent. So that's the, that's the timeline. So if the report was made September 24th, this would be the meeting that the board has already reviewed the findings, and then the next meeting, they will be September. That's for that one. To the parent who was, had shared concerns, not knowing specifics, I, you know, if you go to the proper person and they didn't get back to you, you should go, keep moving up the chain of command. So it's my understanding that no one ever got back to you with your concerns, or they got back to you and it wasn't the outcome that you were looking for?
So I reached out under Mr. Todd.
Discussion, okay, we can speak after, maybe if you want.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, and then Mr. Trent, do you want to give an update? Because we do have shared services agreements that are being reviewed by the township, that's why they weren't on the board agenda tonight, because they're, we're not done with going back and forth with the township and the school district. Do you want to add something else there?
Sure, it's, they're in the process, we're still in, we wouldn't call it negotiations, we're talking with the township, how it can work best for both the school and the township. I think it's been out there, the original worry was some of the damage that was caused to the high school courts and how that can impact the high school tennis season. And we're working through the agreements to figure out the timeframes, and, I mean, we anticipate having that done by next board meeting, we're trying to meet with the township, that's our intention. We're actively trying to meet with them now, and, but the goal is to figure out an agreement that works for the district and the township regarding tennis courts, regarding the pickleball courts and the courts that are already open, and regarding the pool. So that, that's all in play right now and in discussion.
And just one more note, please understand that, yes, we are a public school, we are a public school district, and the tax money that comes to the schools is for the use of facilities for the students first, right? And the students are our priority, and during the school day, when students are here, we cannot have any access to the public, so. But as Mr. Trent said, we are working on a shared service agreement with the township.
Thank you, Superintendent McGlocklin. At this time, any closing discussion from any member of the board? Here are none. It's time I entertain a motion to adjourn. It's been properly moved and second, all those in favor, state aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same right, abstentions. Thank you all, have a good evening.